From the Pledge of Allegiance. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Bailey.
Yeah.
Mr. Bateman.
Here.
Mr. Goodyear.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Ori. Vice Mayor Phelps.
Here.
Mr. Ping.
Here.
Welcome, everyone. With us tonight, we have our Director of Finance, Mark Medler, Assistant City Manager, Chris Weinich, Clerk of Council, Misty Clark, City Manager, Dave Kennedy, City Solicitor, Joe Braun, Chief of Police, Michael Gabrielson, Former Council Members, Kent Blair, Todd Osborne, and Pat May. So, welcome, everyone. Let's start with the Cole Brothers. Will you meet me at the podium? Small businesses bring character, connection, and vitality to our city. They support our economy, create gathering places, and contribute in ways that go far beyond their storefronts. As mayor and on behalf of City Council, I believe it's important to recognize these contributions. Come up here. Come on now. And to celebrate the milestones that mark their journey with us. It's one of the many ways we can say thank you for investing in Loveland and helping it grow. Tonight, we want to celebrate an incredible milestone, the 10-year anniversary of Plaid Room Records. When Plaid Room opened its doors a decade ago, it brought something special to our community, not just great music, but a space that's become a local favorite. Over the years, it has become a destination for vinyl lovers from near and far, and a shining example of how a small business can leave a big impact. Businesses like Plaid Room Records help to find the character of our community. They have contributed to the energy and charm of our downtown, supported local events, and created a place people are proud to call part of Loveland. On behalf of the city, congratulations on your 10-year anniversary. We're proud to celebrate with you, and we can't wait to see what the next 10 years will bring.
Oh, yeah, I've got words.
You got words?
No words.
Yeah, it's been, it's wild. It's been 10 years. I feel like we just, I just quit my job teaching with Mr. Hart and drove down here out of anger. I'll never forget driving down to Loveland really angry. After a, after a meeting in our former school district with the whole staff, and I drove down here very angry and just sort of angrily paced around Loveland and looked for places to rent and saw the Brown Building. I called Bob that night. He had just finished grad school and was in Minnesota. He'd just finished like a six-week solo camping trip and was about to get started a job working as a computer engineer, making even more money than I made as a public school teacher. And I was like, hey, man, you, like, that sounds boring. You don't, you don't really want to, like, be an engineer and like do all that stuff, use your degrees. And I was like, gotta be honest. I think I'm done teaching. And, I mean, I really did love teaching, but, yeah, he was like, yeah, I'll help you out for a little while. That's fine. Help you, like, get off the ground. That's cool. Yeah, 10 years later, he's, he's still, we're still helping each other get off the ground. But, yeah, Loveland has been a wonderful, a wonderful community to grow business in and to live in, and it feels like it's still the beginning for us here. And, you know, I know there was some skepticism in the early days when we first moved down here. There were a lot of people that were like, I don't get it. I don't understand it one bit. And that was okay. We had, I think, one of our very first advocates was Cece. Cece was like our first big, like, hey, I think this is a thing. I think maybe this can work. And since then, I think we've, you know, we've shown that we're, you know, sort of know what we're doing. But we really do appreciate all the support, and now we get to employ like 19-plus people and be a part of this wonderful community. And here's to 10 or 20 more years or something. So, thank you. Oh, yeah, plug. Got a plug. June 7th, June 7th, we're having a nice, wonderful event, and you guys have been so gracious to let us just stomp on your front lawn. We're having a big event to celebrate 10 years here. We're having bands all day. We'll have a bunch of record vendors. The Whippy Dip is going to pull their truck down here. We'll be doing like face painting. We'll have a dunk tank, more importantly. All the proceeds that are going to a nonprofit. Yeah, it's gonna be, yeah, big sale. This is gonna be a great weekend. So, June 7th, fingers crossed for good weather. Yeah, should be great. So, thanks, y'all. We appreciate this. All right.
Oh, I bet. It's bad.
Really, thanks.
Congratulations. A very, congratulations.
Hold on. All right, open forum. Mr. Blair.
Somebody forgot, oh.
Good thing there's nothing in there.
My name's Kent Blair. I live at 1849 Pheasant Hills Drive in Loveland. I'm here tonight to talk about fluoride and water. As someone who grew up with four siblings in the 50s and 60s, I could freely confess that our teeth were terrible. And we had cavities from one end to the other of us. And my mom, at one point, she was a school nurse, she took us to the dentist and we had treatments and stuff. Just terrible teeth. Fast forward 20 years, then the kids in my family, all had kids. Their teeth were bulletproof. Why? You know the answer. The answer was, it was a little bit of fluoride in every glass of water we drank, and the results showed it. None of my nieces and nephews had any problems with cavities. My youngest, who was born in the sunset of the 20th century, now almost 25, has never had a cavity in his life. Because of fluoride. And yet, the conspiracy theorists and tinfoil hat wearers in Columbus would have you believe that fluoride is a terrible thing, and they are actively considering banning fluoride in the water in the state of Ohio. Now, I make no justification for why they're doing this. It's, the science was settled 40 years ago. I'm living experience of it. And so, I'm bringing this to you tonight because I, while I understand very well that the city of Loveland has made it a tradition and a policy to stay in our lane, I agree, and I agree absolutely with that, I think that when it comes to water, we have our own water system. We are a chart, we have a charter, home rule government. And I think that gives us more leeway when it comes to things like water systems and what goes into those water systems. And so, my ask is that whatever opportunities you all have to talk to state legislators, tell them to get their head out of wherever it is and leave the water alone. As an alternative, please suggest that as a home rule city, we can continue to put fluoride in our water, should we do so. Now, fluoride, when consumed in excess, is harmful. Carrots, when consumed in excess, are harmful. Water, when consumed in excess, is harmful. The city of Loveland currently adds less than 10% of the maximum allowable fluoride to its water. It's safe. Your kids thank you. Your grandchildren will thank you. Your great-grandchildren will thank you. And I thank you.
And thank you. All right, review and approval of the minutes from the May 13th, 2025 meeting. Any changes, additions?
Move to approve as written.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Kennedy.
So, tonight, resolution in front of council awarding the bid for the West Loveland Turn Lane Project. Just looking back through city council goals, improving traffic was actually, it's been on city council goals for four years, two different cycles, 22, 23, and 24, 25. I think council realized a few years ago that there was never a quick fix, and through those goals, it sort of developed these incremental changes from traffic signals to everything possible, and every little one has made a difference. So, the next, the next project up on the slate is the expansion of the turn lane on West Loveland for southbound traffic onto Loveland Madera Road. That turn lane currently has capacity of three vehicles, and it creates a stacking, especially during the peak hours, as the cars that are wanting to turn south have to wait for the through traffic to go. And post-project will actually double the capacity. This project is, was part of the 2025 CIP, and we had various myriads of this, but we went with this version, which was one of the, the middle-of-the-road version. Actually, Chris and I, realizing that this would have the greatest impact on Dairy Whip, we actually met with the owners of Dairy Whip, and based on that conversation, we decided to defer the project to September 29th as the start date. That's actually the day after he closes for the season. It's greatly appreciated. The project will not impact his day-to-day life, but it would during construction. We confirmed with our traffic engineer that the project can still be completed well during the construction season. So, it'll, we thought it would be good to go ahead and bid it, get the contracts done, get all the materials, and be ready to go on that Monday in full structure. So, that worked out well. City got five bids. Their bids were open on May 30th. Five bids. Low bidder was J.K. Muir, 67, 758. We're certainly benefiting because J.K. Muir will be in town during the road program. And the bid is actually 88,242 under what we put in the CIP. With this, the only note is that Chris and I were talking, and once we get started, if there is any change orders, we certainly don't want to be delayed. So, we're asking a motion for the contract added not to exceed 77,000. That should give us plenty of leeway that we can make any change orders without having to run back to council, and that will help expedite the project. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Vice Mayor.
Is there any sewer line implications to this stuff?
It's actually a very simple project. We're taking it out of a street capital and some stormwater. Just straight up, there was a tree that needed to be removed. We removed it during the bat, Indiana bat season. The, that stump may cause a small change order that we don't know until they start digging, so we'll have plenty of room to do it. Note, straight-up stormwater, road expansion, pretty, pretty simple project. But it should have a significant impact along with that turn lane arrow. That helps move things through, too.
Mr. Ping.
I'm just curious, on the sidewalk there in front of the, the restaurant, does that get realigned at all?
Yes.
To this? And they have signage there and that kind of thing. It doesn't affect any of their property, right?
None of my drawings do a very good job of showing where the taper begins. We're all within the right of way. Chris and I, Chris was able to sort of demonstrate him everything. And the rub was just mostly his exit lane would have been greatly impacted during construction.
Sure.
But everything's within the right of way. We didn't, there was no easements.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments? All right, read the resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with J.K. Muir E. For the completion of the West Loveland Avenue Turn.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Resolution 49 is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Mr. Kennedy.
Nope, it's that time of year again. We opened, accepted bids for annual salt, for the 2025-26 season. We opened bids, which is basically proposals, on May 19th. We bid out the salt at 100, at 1,000 tons. City received two bids with the low bid from Compass, 96, 69 dumped, 11, 118, 69 piled. There's really not a lot of piling. Piling is just at the end, when they'll shoot it in to cap it off as much as possible, because we're required to buy 80%. So, there's, the vast majority of our salt is dumped. Last year, because we had such an ample supply from the year before, we only expended 16,820 on road salt. But they did, they did put out a total of 680 tons last year with the vast majority of it during the snowstorm in January. Scott says probably 75 to 80% of the total in the year was just during that window, snow window. That was all I had. This would just authorize us to buy as needed with a minimum of 80% of that.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Bateman?
I'm glad you mentioned the snow event that we had this, this past winter, because it was really a lot more than, than, than we'd been expecting. So,
Yeah.
it seems like the, you really know your salt, you're worth your salt. Comes to, to making the predictions of what we're going to take. So, I've got all the faith in the world of your ability to do this.
You're worth your salt.
Yeah, thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Ping.
Yes, I, I think we sometimes neglect to appreciate the importance of salt. So, I have some written remarks. Ode to a salt pile.
Oh, no.
A gritty hill of crystal and white, you guard our roads through winter's bite. With every grain, you fight the freeze and melt the wrath of ice with ease. With trucks, you ride on streets once slick, your touch abrasive, sharp and quick, melts danger into slush and brine, a martyr in the grand design. Through rust and stains, though, though rust and stains may mark your path, we owe you thanks, not scorn or wrath. Unsung, you stand through sleet and chill, a humble hero on the hill.
That's great. Very touching, very touching. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Hart, you don't have anything?
How in the world could I ever say something?
Don't you have an ode to our mayor?
I think I'd get a, I'd get something by then.
Okay, moving on. Can we read the resolution, please?
Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Compass Madera for the purchase of road salt for 2025, 2026 winter.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Resolution 50 is adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Weinich.
Thank you, Mayor. That's gonna be tough to top, but I'll try. Phase one, before you is a, an engineering amendment to our current contract with Choice One Engineering for our Loveland Madera Road improvements, phase one project. Just to recap, this is the Valley View to, back to West Loveland portion of the corridor improvements. We're currently in what's, what's kind of called stage one, some middle to ODOT. And during that process, we had an internal review on the plans. So, brought in Public Works, specifically Ricky Gregory, our water superintendent, to discuss the condition of the water main. This water main there is actually, there's actually two water mains. There's an eight-inch and a four-inch, circa around 1960s era, cast iron, quite frankly, in poor condition. We brought up historically the main breaks that have occurred on, on these mains, and kind of basically discussed that if we don't do this now, we're gonna, quite frankly, look foolish when you go through and you, you do, you know, a nice new roadway, and we don't do all the utilities as necessary. And because this is, this is, you know, a replacement of an existing water main, we do have the funds available through the WMR fund. That's been a very healthy fund, that this is exactly what it's intended for. So, we sat down with Choice One and said, hey, you know, give us a proposal to get this in the plans before it's too late. And their proposal is for an additional $19,300, which would be expended from the WMR fund. And we anticipate, I don't have the hard numbers yet from them, but my, my anticipation is around $300,000 in replacement costs. It will be replaced with, as I said, there's an eight and four. It'll be replaced with a single eight. The eight and four were installed in, in a weird, I tried to understand the process, thought process. It almost looked like it was installed almost to, to serve, you know, the, the, the other side of the road and to save cost, but there's no need for that amount of capacity on that road. So, the eight-inch, putting in just a single eight-inch will be sufficient. So, with that, we're asking council to approve an amendment to that agreement with Choice One.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Mr. Hart.
So, do you think that's, and I'm not being intimately aware of our water main system here, having that redundancy in our, in our mains, is that kind of the only place that's happening? Or you have other areas where that's happening?
So, it's actually not redundant, because the way it's, the way it was, the way it was designed, both sides of the road aren't tied into both of those mains. So, the four-inch only serves like one side of the road, and the eight-inch serves the other side. So, in reality, it's not really redundant. Now, if they were all, if they were tied into both, if that eight and four was connected in better locations where it was redundant, then yes, I would say that would be true. But it's, it's a, it was, it was a weird layout, and it doesn't make a ton of sense of why it was done that way. But once again, you know, it was done in the 60s. And I'm sure there's reasoning for what they were doing. But as far as other redundant areas like that, not really. It's, it, you know, if money was, you know, grew on trees, yeah, it'd be great to have redundancy everywhere, but it's just not feasible everywhere. So, no, it's not critical to this area to have redundant mains.
Any other comments or questions? All right, read the resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to amend its agreement with Choice One Engineering for Loveland Madera Road Corridor Improvements, Phase One Project.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Resolution 51 is adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Weinich.
Continuing our theme, talking about water, before you is a request to submit, for the city manager to submit an application for a principal loan forgiveness. Yeah, principal, principal forgiveness loan through the Ohio EPA. We originally were about to submit this probably about six months ago. However, the way it was miscommunicated through the state down to local, but to get the principal loan forgiveness, you have to submit in, in this round. So, emerging contaminants, you can submit for loans at any time, but for the principal forgiveness, you have to submit during this open nomination period. So, we, we nominated about, about a month ago, we nominated the design for this project. It looks very favorable. They reached out to us and said, hey, get all your ducks in a row. If you, we think we can get you going by July. So, what this, what this resolution is asking for is basically to finish out that loan nomination. And once again, you'll see loan everywhere in here, but it's principal forgiveness loan. You know, just to reiterate, it will, it would be essentially, they don't call it a grant, but it's a grant. And we can ask for up to $2 million. So, and that's what we are going to do, because that's what our proposals have come in, come in at. If you remember, we, we originally were under contract with Burgess and Neipel. They did our general plan, which is currently at the state, at Ohio EPA, being reviewed. It's in its third iteration. I've reached out. I, they tell me it's in the, the districts, the department head's hands for signature, so I'm still waiting on that, but that's a critical piece to this puzzle. So, we're hoping to see that come back. In that general plan, if you recall, what they basically did, and in the planning document, was you looked, we looked at all the different methodologies to treat for PFOS. There's essentially three. It's membranes, it's anion exchange, and it's granular activated carbon. The most cost-effective and the most logical route for the city of Loveland to go is with granular activated carbon. So, that's, that's the, that's a method that's been chosen to go down that path. The design would, would center around that. It would require an additional building out at the Betty Ray, Betty Ray Treatment Facility. So, in your packet, you do see a very rudimentary concept plan that was laid out in that general plan. And if you recall, we did go, we did go out for requests for proposals for the design. So, we've already gone through that process, and we identified AECom as actually the most, the, the, the best firm to undertake this, and their proposal is just, just shy of $2 million. So, as I said, we'll be, we are submitting for that full $2 million, and that's, that's what's basically we're asking for today. So, if anyone has any questions, they'll be happy to take it. And before I go any further, you, I'm sure you heard in the news and, and coming out of Washington, they are looking at this rule. They have said that they don't anticipate the rule necessarily changing. However, they do anticipate the deadline moving from 2029 back to 2031. They're pushing out a new outreach program, and I included that in your packet. I'm not going to go over every single thing they've talked about, because it's in its infancy, but we do anticipate some changes to this. But with that said, when any opportunity is available for us to go after the money to continue this, this shit moving forward, that's what we're gonna do. So.
Very good. Any comments or questions? Vice Mayor.
It's fair to say the state hasn't pulled back in terms of what it's doing.
That's correct. So, the state, this, right now, in fact, the state actually, in reality, the state has not implemented a rule yet. So, the US EPA has said 2029, four parts per trillion, yada, yada, yada. But in reality, Ohio EPA has not implemented this rule yet. They say they're doing it. They're currently going through it, but they have not implemented the rule currently. It's a, it's a, it's a very convoluted process, because there's a lot, it's, it's, I mean, across the board, I mean, we're talking billions of dollars that, you know, people have to spend and communities have to spend on their water systems. So, this is, this is one of the largest, besides the, the initiation of the Safe Drinking Water Act, this is the single biggest change ever to occur to drinking water. So, it's, it's a big deal. But to answer your question, nothing has really changed, and officially, nothing has changed. It's still technically 2029 from the US EPA, but they've said we are, we are reopening this.
Mr. Hart.
You may, may or may not have answered this question, but have others, talk saying that Ohio hasn't really taken this on yet at the state level, have other states taken an approach to this, either with higher standards in the federal or lower standards in federal, like, you know, heavy in case other states or what they're doing with this?
Yeah, the, the most prominent state that I know that's made it, made it public that they are currently and actively more that they are currently and actively more stringent than the U S E P A is Michigan. Um, I do know Michigan has, uh, moved forward ahead of the U S E P A and they've implemented it up there. Um, other than Michigan, I'm not a hundred percent sure on any other states, but I do know Michigan is, I would say, um, they've pushed this along, uh, much quicker than any other states.
Thank you.
Mr. Goodyear?
Is our ability to be successful in getting this in in participating in this program require, or excuse me, contingent on our plan being approved by the EPA?
That's correct. Um, they will not, yes, they will, we, we will move through, continue through this process, but they won't actually give us that, that, that two million dollars in design money until the general plan is approved. Um, so I'm waiting on that and I'm hopeful that we will see that very soon.
So the fact that they're encouraging us to participate is probably a good sign overall.
It is. Um, the, the same, the same, uh, the same loan, uh, I don't know what her title is exactly, but at the Ohio EPA, the same lady that worked through the planning portion of this for us when we got forty-six thousand dollars to do the plan. Um, she's been very, very, very helpful and has basically told us, you know, get everything in, you know, it's, it's looking good. So.
Is there any, I know you, you mentioned this, the plans in the director's hands, whatever that means. Is there any timetable for when I get an answer?
Uh, unfortunately, Ohio EPA has timetables, but they they typically don't stick to them very well. Um, I do have a, I do have an additional call in, um, with, we, we do have some contacts that are a little bit higher up over there too, that we do, I do have a phone call in to try to keep this moving. Um, and it's not because, you know, and I, I, you know, it, it's simply, it's been sitting over there for quite a while with ver, and keep in mind, the comments that were given to us were very, very minute. Um, they were not big picture, they were not, you know, they weren't even, it wasn't even questioning our ability or our, uh, nonability to regionalize. Um, we've already, in my opinion, based on no comment back, we've proved that regionalization is not right for the city of Loveland. Um, so they're very minute com, you know, very small comments, um, which is another reason why it's a little, little, you know, little disheartening that it doesn't come back a little quicker. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Read the resolution, please. Resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for funding from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency Division of Environmental and Financial Assistance through the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account for Program Year two thousand twenty-six for assistance with the design and treatment for emerging contaminants.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Resolution fifty-two is adopted by a vote of seventy. Mr. Kennedy?
Um, so to the, the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, one of their, uh, more popular grant programs, it's called Nature Works. Uh, the city has been able to receive quite a bit of nature works funding for the Nesbit Park Master Plan. Uh, that, uh, funding is typically due, uh, typically in August, uh, period of time. We just happened to realize, uh, that it's actually due June second. So we were able to talk into the mayor to get a piece of legislation. We knew what the project was, so we were able to get a piece of legislation on there. And actually, Chris and I put a pretty good dent in the application already. So we'll have no problem getting it completed by June second. But with that is a requirement that city pass, uh, legislation authorizing submission and the committing of a local match. Our next step is from basically what you approved, uh, last meeting with the swings and the walkway is to go from there all the way around the back of the amphitheater, that connection over to the, um, restroom area. This will complete the entire outer ring of the proposed walking trail. We will then have the stone walk down to the river and two dissecting areas within the middle. This would be a, 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 one of the, this would be the first, the seating areas wrapped up, the seating areas, the gazebo wrapped up. This would wrap up the largest portion of the walking trail. So the estimated cost is, uh, sixty-seven thousand for the entire project. We are gonna request the entire Clermont County allocation, which would be fifty thousand two fifty. City's local match would, uh, be sixteen thousand seven fifty. Um, so, uh, to be honest with you, this actually allows the city to focus all of the money on the amphitheater, only on the amphitheater because this would do the upper and the lower walkway around the back of the amphitheater. So, um, this legislation is required for the application.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Call the roll, oh, read the resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to submit and execute an Ohio Department of Natural Resources Nature Works Grant Application for the expansion of the Nesbit Park Walking Trail.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Resolution fifty-three is adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Winich?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, before you is a, uh, first reading of a proposed ordinance. Um, as you, uh, recall, from probably ninety-five, nineteen ninety-five to about two thousand seven, several large tracts of land along Butterworth Road were annexed into the city. Um, as part of those annexations, um, those became basically three large subdivisions, uh, Brandywine, Butterworth Glen and Chimney Ridge. Um, those, those actually, uh, there's approximately three hundred and fifty-two homes that basically let out onto Butterworth Road on three, three different, um, access points. Um, and if you kind of look through the rest of the city, um, when you have dense, dense populations coming out onto a roadway, um, typically what you see is a thirty-five mile an hour zone, um, because it's a lot of traffic coming out and it's just much safer. Um, and as we were looking at the connectivity projects that we have going, um, specifically the sidewalk project that'll be going down State Route forty-eight and up Butterworth to connect all these subdivisions. Um, forty-five miles, forty-five mile an hour zone on Brandy, around Butterworth, um, is, is a little, it's a little quick. Um, it's a little quick for that many homes coming out there and having potential sidewalks. Um, so we took, we took a look at it, um, and talked to, uh, Chief of Police, uh, Chief Gabrielson and talked with our, with, uh, Mr. Braun, our city solicitor, you know, and just made sure that, you know, if if we propose this, does this make sense? Um, and, you know, we got affirmation from both, both of them that, you know, you certainly, uh, as far as the police department's concerned, makes a lot of sense, makes it a lot safer. Um, you know, as you can see, you know, within, within that map that I provided you, there's very few areas within the city that we are greater than thirty-five miles an hour. Um, you know, we're five square miles and it's not, we don't have open country roads like that. Um, so when it was annexed, obviously it wasn't contemplated at that time. They just kept the speed limit as forty-five is what it was. Um, but we, we felt at a staff level, looking at this, um, for the future safety, for that pedestrian connectivity, as well as the dense population that's coming out on those roads, um, it makes a lot of sense, um, as well as a lot of input from residents. Uh, we did, we have gotten input about the speed on that road and how you approach the, uh, the stop sign there at State Route forty-eight. And when you, when you head into town, you're basically, you're, you're down to thirty-five coming into town there on forty-eight. Um, so it makes a lot of sense. Um, so this would go from Dorsey Lane, which is the, the city limits down to State Route forty-eight, uh, from forty-five, uh, down to thirty-five miles an hour.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Mr. Goodyear?
Well, first I would say, living in Brandywine, I welcome this change, especially knowing that the sidewalks are coming. Um, certainly I experience frequently people driving much more than forty-five miles an hour on, um, Butterworth. So I, I certainly appreciate, um, that this is being brought forward and the change. I do have one question though about it. So right now, so assuming this is passed by council this evening, from Butterworth Glen to Brandywine would be thirty-five. From basically Century Hill into the city, or the city starts Century Hill essentially, that that area is thirty-five. There's a portion that would be from the, the intersection of Butterworth and forty-eight until you get Century Hill, that's still forty-five. And I know it was fifty-five and then about a year and a half ago, there was a traffic study that reduced it to forty-five. Once we started working on the, um, sidewalks, it's gonna come right up there. Do you think we have the opportunity with ODOT again to do another traffic study and possibly get that, that portion reduced to thirty-five to match what everywhere, everywhere else in that area would be?
Yeah, I, I do and I, um, I'd like to look back. I haven't looked at that study. I, uh, Mr. Kennedy, do you recall, did they, did they identify the intersection as the change point or, because?
I don't remember.
Okay.
I had to work with Hamilton Township to do a step down with Hamilton Township. That was a part of it. I can, I'll send you everything in.
Yeah. But if, uh, Mr. Goodyear, if that is not the case, that it's not there that the thirty-five should be starting, because you are right. I'm thinking about where that sign is for thirty-five. It's after the intersection because that's how I come in every day. Um, but I was, I, I had thought it was at the intersection, but if that's not the case, then yes, we will pursue that, um, and and talk to ODOT. Um, I think if you, you know, it will, it will also increase our ability to make that argument if we have the speed limit on Butterworth at thirty-five.
Right.
Makes a lot more sense. Um, so we will certainly take a look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All right, read the resolution, please.
Ordinance approving the reduction of speed limit on Butterworth Road from forty-five miles per hour to thirty-five miles per hour within the city of Loveland Corporation limits.
All right, thank you. So first reading only. Mr. Kennedy?
Uh, for you, the motion, uh, tonight is a, uh, request to transfer Fire Station sixty-three property to the C I C. This would allow us, uh, facilitate sale, the future sale of the property. Uh, we've been actually working on with the realtors since, actually before construction and the new station began. Uh, it's very beneficial in hindsight. I should have done this a while ago. It's hi, it's beneficial for the entire process to have this enhanced C I C. Per the city's, uh, code one oh seven point one, this again is similar to any interest that the city is councils giving up on property. Does require, uh, public hearing and then ordinance. So what I'm requesting is that city council set a public hearing for June tenth. Uh, at that point, at that hearing, we'll go ahead and do the first reading and then that will allow us to do the second reading after your second meeting in June.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, so we need a motion approving a public hearing for the June tenth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting to garner public input on the transfer of a city-owned property to the City of Loveland Community Improvement Corporation.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Doesn't say that. Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Medler?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So even though we are still going through our audit for twenty twenty-four, it's time to start thinking about the twenty twenty-six budget, moving right along. So our obligation to the state is to hold a public meeting regarding the twenty twenty-six tax budget. So this is a very general budget. It doesn't go into details that we get into our regular operating budget or our C I P budget, which we all enjoy talking about with Mr. Kennedy. So it's talking about our property taxes and our taxes that we get from that go through our general fund and through our fire funds. So those are the main focus. We'll give some estimates on what we're, you know, seeing so far in twenty twenty-five and what we're going to estimate for twenty twenty-six. So again, this has to be a public hearing before July fifteenth and it has to be approved before July twentieth and we send it to Hamilton County. So what we're asking for is to set a public hearing for the twenty twenty-six tax budget on July eighth, twenty twenty-five at or around seven P M.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any comments or questions? Mr. Hart?
What, what would one come in common? I guess it's like a state level question. What, what comments will be, would be looking to get?
So potentially somebody could see what our estimates are for our taxes and if it was way too high or way too low, they can make a comment about that.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? If someone cared to make a motion?
I'll move to schedule a public hearing on July eighth, twenty twenty-five at about, at or about seven P M just to receive comments regarding this twenty twenty-two six tax budget.
So.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, I don't have any reports, correct?
No.
All right, does anybody have anything to report? Or a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
What am I gonna do with this ode to salt?